So with our students, every trustee makes a difference. So although this is the voted on by the voters by one, it is of the utmost importance to all of our district presidents. As clarification, and this is a sort of disclaimer, the PTA is a nonpartisan organization. We neither endorse nor oppose any particular candidates in this election. That means we are not getting behind one group, we are not opposing another group. We are supporting our children, and in supporting our children, we are here to provide voter information and education. The main purpose of our forum is to foster civil discourse. When I say civil discourse, I mean that in two senses. Civil in its terms of being about government and how our society is run, and civil in terms of its tone, that a big one of respect. We know that in our current political climate, anytime somebody stands for office, they are opening themselves to the online views of polls. I have seen numerous posts and comments on social media in the past few weeks regarding the candidates here in front of me. None of those posts or comments were necessary. To the individuals who made those comments and who made those posts, I ask you, are you furthering the cause of education for our children, or are you simply seeking attention from behind your key? Step up to the table, to the podium, wherever it needs to be, and make your communications, make your voices heard, in a manner that will foster discussion, that will move our children's education forward. We are not here to validate and achieve this. We are not here to make people feel better about themselves when they are old enough to know better. We are here to help our children in our district achieve their highest potential. We can disagree on the pathways we take, we can disagree on the methods we use to get there, but in the end, we need long results, and we need to show our children that even if we disagree, we can compromise to make the best path for the core work available. Our student board member of San Juan Valley High School District, Anna Icon, to lead us in the clutch of elections.
To the wire of the United States of America, into the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much again. So as I went to the microphone, I was a senior economist at high school and superintendent on the town looking for the PTA. I wanted to say a few words on the importance of this election from the student perspective. And that's it.
Thank you everyone, and thank you Raggedy. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, hi everyone. My name is Arno Verma, and I'm a senior administrator at High School. I serve on the Montevista California and California State PTA as an ordinary and the common class of PTA as a secretary. And on behalf of students and stakeholders and San Juan Valley High School District, I'm honored to speak to you about the importance of participating in our upcoming school board election. Let's be clear, for the majority of Americans, school boards have historically been something of a travesty, unless you're likely in pouring over budget requests and high taxes. That all changed as the pandemic, however, where school board meetings have been anything but sweet. As schools reopen and navigating the tropics of rerighted education, you may have noticed that protests are taking over school board nationwide by storm. These protests stem from controversial theories centered on education. Many of which affect these citizens of maybe five school boards. Too often, however, these decisions serve the personal and political agenda without the intervention of key stakeholders like New Year. The thing is, running a school board is hard. Boards must answer sensitive and complex questions whilst considering their students, first and foremost. Questions of public health, where to allocate their budget, and how to maximize educational efficiency, all this determine time in our nation. That's why I have such immense respect for our current board members who have worked so hard to encourage and ensure our students' welfare. As we turn to our own election now, we see the impact of the political turbulence in schools across the nation is great. In it is children's talk, and the topic, it's often overlooked in these decisions as well. That's why this one is a period that when they experience the cornerstone of our battle. The reason this one is so important is that school board leaders are sensitive to them. They don't know what they're doing. Leaders believe in candidates and their own political affiliations to help them in their decisions. Familiarity and turnout margins creates attractive and sets outcomes. School board elections are fundamentally different. Contra costa turnout for gubernatorial elections is upwards of 30%. The national average for a school board election is higher than 10%. That's brutally scary. We cannot allow these frustrated to be put in the hands of an official who only represents a fraction of the population. That's why this election, soon, I implore each and every one of you to make it further. School boards are a bridge between our communities and our schools. They're our voices, and though we don't see them every day, we're going to our teachers, we'll suspect every facet of our educational experience. All the way from these technology courses we offer to be very human rights insured to our students. Schools can no longer be the invisible men approving decisions when it looks to stakeholders. They have to be actively engaged and communicating about the values and the needs of the men they represent and serve. And if any part of that now lies in us, in students and in parents. Now, by the nature of being a huge sixteen year old festival, I unfortunately cannot cast my bow, but I need those of you who can, to vote for a candidate on behalf of students like myself and your children. School board members draw a map with the direction of the school district. So please, vote for a candidate who sees a picture that you want to see in the education system. Thank you.
I'm going to introduce our moderator now. She's an amazing woman, I'm so excited to have her. Her name is Anne Flynn. She is a past president of the League of Women Voters. She served on the Walnut Creek District, School District Board of Governors for two terms, and she retired from the US State Department as a board service officer, possibly way back. Anne has been a moderator for many election cycles in the constant area, and she considers school board races to be the most important races in our area because of the impact they have on our children and on our teachers. But that, Anne?
Thank you very much Raggedy. Good evening and welcome to today's event. As Raggedy said, I am Anne Flynn, and I'm a big advocate of voters in Diablo Valley. We have some brochures out in the lobby if you want to bring up more about the league. And thank you for joining us this evening. This forum is sponsored by the San Juan Valley Council of PTAs to present candidates running for the San Juan Valley of like two districts, Area One. There is one open seat and three candidates. So the candidates participating tonight are in, for the audience here in the theater, starting here to my left, is Jerome Pendel, and Michelle Peterson, and Jesse Van Zee. The league is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any candidate. We are here tonight as part of our key mission to educate and inform voters. As your moderator, I neither live nor vote in this district. The forum is being recorded. We ask that audience members not record audio or video, so as not to have a seen partial segment of our program. So at this moment, please silence yourself. I want to ask you in advance not to cheer or applaud any statement, because if one person starts it, then somebody else feels like they have to do it. It makes my job difficult and takes time away from the candidates. So please, no audience participation. Before the program began, the name of each candidate was selected and ran to determine opening speaking order. Closing statements will be in the reverse order. Each candidate will give two minute opening remarks, and then a three minute closing statement at the end. During the question and answer portion, I will alternate who I call upon first to avoid giving any candidate an advantage or disadvantage. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer their question. If they wish, each candidate will have the opportunity for two rebuttals of one minute each upon their request. We have a timer visible to the participants in the front row down here. Speakers can see a green card when it's, there are a lot of time if you show the green case, so that they can see when you're talking, most of the green. They'll see a yellow card when you have 15 seconds remaining in your time, and then when your time is up, you'll see a red card. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have to number one, the first one to answer will be Michelle Peterson. And the question is, which one is one thing the current school board does well, and how will you contribute to that work to make it even better?
So one of the things that I think that the school board does really well is it helps to set district vision and goals, and I really concur, like the direction that our school is going and our district is going, and the access to excellence program that has been rolled out this past year. I think that they do a really good job with that, so that's where I would stay.
Thank you very much. We can't hear, we can't hear.
No. All right, I'll try that again. Is that better? I'm so sorry. We'll work through this by the time we're done. I was saying that I believe that the school board works really well with the district in setting vision and goals, and I'm really proud of the path to academic excellence and the strategic initiatives that have been worked by our district and led by our superintendent, Dr. Loy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Zee.
All right, yeah. You did get me. I think the running of this school board has to be incredibly hard. You're trying to hear all the voices, you're trying to understand what people are doing, and then you have to make a decision at the end of the day. We had the opportunity to work with Dr. Loy and the rest of the district office and understand a little bit more about what our responsibility would be as a board member. My responsibility as a board member is to hear each voice in the community and make sure that I'm taking your voice and informing the district, and informing the board, and working with fellow board members to make sure that we're understanding everything that the district needs. Even though I'm running for Area One, I'm running for this entire district. I'm running for a voice for parents to be back on board of education. I'm running for students, and I'm running for a voice in our community. And I appreciate everything that the board has done. I think it's an incredibly difficult job to hear all those voices and then try to chart a path forward. And if I'm elected on the board, I look forward to working with each and every one of you, and I see some of you here, thank you for coming, to make sure that we have the best solutions we possibly can for our kids.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Pendel.
Should I do the unmute, Heidi?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Michelle, one more.
All right. So one of the things that was really rewarding for me serving on the facilities committee was I got to ultimately work with three board members, Tendence, Susanna, and Miss Jensen. And one of the things I really appreciated was how they can still, in this committee where they are ex officium members, they need to talk through issues. One of the people I worked with very closely on that committee was Shelley Clark, another current trustee, and she was my vice chair for two of the years. I was chair of the facilities oversight committee, and talking through tough issues, like for example, how the design can fit into the cost constraints we have in a school bond, is something that I know carries over into the board, and you see it every day, no matter what happens in terms of raucous interruptions or anything like that. A lot of people think when you're an attorney, like I am, that you just like to argue all the time, and there's plenty of room for that in a courtroom or somewhere else, but the reality is, what we always try to do, at least in my cases and in my practice, is we try to mediate solutions. I think that is something you get by talking through issues and problems with each other in an open board meeting, as you're required to do under the Brown Act, but also in your various subcommittee roles that you take on as a board member. And I feel really prepared to do that based on my volunteer experience in this district.
Thank you very much. Now, our next question, we're ready to start with Mr. Van Zee, will answer it first. Student mental health and wellbeing is on everyone's mind. What sources of information would you rely on to make decisions for improvements in this area, and what improvements would you make?
Well, there's one thing that's become increasingly clear over the past two years is that our students benefit when schools are open, and when kids are in school, and when they're learning with their peers. That's one thing that we saw a huge hit on mental health for kids when they were not able to be in-person learning. And I know that that was a hard thing to balance between the fear and some of the data coming out, between county health officials, and between parents. I would go directly to the source. I've talked to the school counselors. I would ask them what they're seeing. I have many friends that are school counselors in the district, and they've told me firsthand experiences of how horrible some of the increase in depression has really happened in students. We need to serve these students, we need to make sure that they have the resources needed for that care, and we also need to make sure that we keep them in schools and in class where they belong and where they can thrive, and that's important for their social and emotional wellbeing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendel.
Mute.
All right. Student mental and emotional health is something that has to be a core part of every child's learning experience, from when they first enter campuses, which pretty soon may be at the pre-K level, and that program statewide is implemented here, all the way through the voluntary experience. And one of the things I really value in addition to the expansion of counselors at the elementary school campuses that this district has undertaken, is an effort to meet students where they are. And what that really means is helping our teachers develop the skills, even though they are not counselors in and of themselves by training, to identify the needs of students that they see through their learning experience. That is something that we can do as a district, and I know our teachers want to work collaboratively with our district to accomplish that, and I think it's something that at the board level, that is a policy we want to be able to set. A lot of people conceive of the board as, you know, there that only solve necessarily the district's problems. What the board also does is one, hire the superintendent, and also ensures that the superintendent has the tools they need administratively to implement and serve each campus of the district. And I think that is the type of tools for mental and emotional support we need. We also should do more interactions with students as board members. I see that happening with current board members on campus every day, and we should do more of it, like we heard from tonight with our student board representatives. But going to campus is really helpful. I'm excited for a Montevista site visit coming up in a couple of weeks where there will be a student town hall.
Thank you, and Mr. Peterson. So first of all, suicide is the second thing that causes death in 24-year-olds. And suicide rates in 12-year-olds have quadrupled in the last 20 years. This is not a problem. This is declared mental health crisis prior to the pandemic. Yes, the pandemic definitely exacerbated this issue. This has been happening. We're in a crisis. Children are maybe younger than ours, than 12, age 12 compared to age 14. This is coupled with the prevalence of social media, that they're beginning to just cannot handle everything that they're beginning to handle. Earlier intervention is key. We need to guarantee funding for elementary school counselors. Currently, there are 11 full-time employee positions at this level, and I will work as a board trustee to make sure that there's guaranteed funding for this position. Guaranteed accessibility to resources is another very important thing. It is difficult to hire counselors and social work workers. The partnership that we have with the Discovery Counsel Center, Council Center, is so important because they provide training, facilitation to our therapists and counselors, who then go out and work them in our schools, and skip counselors, at a very low cost, no cost initiative for our schools. We reduce, we really need to reduce the stagnation of mental health, background awareness, to the parents and students, and removing barriers to access. We need to make more resources more approachable, and we need to reduce our student council ratios. Counselors at our school, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. You can add to another question later. Okay, our next question will be answered by Mr. Pendel first, so that's good. We have many questions regarding the teaching of critical race theory and the potential banning of books in our schools. Do you agree with the curriculum for our language arts and social studies programs as they are taught in our district? What changes would you make, and why? Mr. Pendel.
So one of the things is very quickly, critical race theory is a very, very difficult law school class that I've had no desire to take, not because of its content, but because it was one of the most difficult professors in my law school who taught it. And he was a great professor, but you know, I think the value here we have to understand is that's a law school, high-level theory, taught among many, many other theories. That has nothing that we see in our high school, elementary, and middle schools. I do think the content of our language arts and social studies curriculum is great. One of the reasons why it's great in our district is because we already have parent and community input in the selection process. There's new course meals that are selected by our teaching professionals. They're vetted fairly, they're tested with classes, and they go through that process. I don't think someone at the board level should be in the position of picking and choosing content-based restrictions for what our students are learning. We should trust the teaching professionals we hire at both the administrative level and at the classroom level to make those decisions, because they are trusted professionals, and they know the content, and know what is needed to meet our state standards.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Peterson.
And I should mute.
Okay. I 100% agree with Mr. Pendel that critical race theory is not taught in K through 12 schools. It is a college and above graduate level course. So thank you for the clarification. I recognize there should be balance, but we need to provide our children with a wide range of perspectives to better empower them to be critical thinkers and make decisions on their own, as they will be working with a wide range of ethnic backgrounds as they enter the real world. There's a process for books to be vetted by our district, as Mr. Pendel will leave it to. We need to follow state law and not go against anything that could expose our district to frivolous lawsuits. These books are then, sorry, the national trend to ban books from schools and libraries primarily affects students in our marginalized communities and denies them the opportunity to read books by authors who think like them, look like them, and they can be a lifeline for these students. If a parent objects to the book, is it right that one parent should speak for the 26 to 30 kids in our schools? Parents do have an opportunity to opt out if they do not agree with a certain book being discussed in a classroom. Lastly, I wanted to say that within my own personal library, I did a quick search. I found the following books to be banned. George Orwell, 1984, A Handmaid's Tale, The God of Small Things, To Kill a Mockingbird, The Hate You Give, Be Loved, and I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings. I challenge all of you to go to your own libraries and look at what is in your personal reading material that you can no longer access in other states.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Zee.
Excellent, yes. I'm doing it, I'm muted. Okay. Critical race theory is a subject that is taught in law schools. However, on a broader scale, I would oppose any sort of teaching that teaches children that they are oppressed or that they're oppressors based on things that they can't control, like the color of their skin, their gender, their sexual identity. To teach kids that they're in a permanent prison is simply not kind, and I wouldn't be standing for any of that. So while we might not be teaching critical race theory, we need to make sure that we're never teaching any sort of ideology that would teach these young, innocent children that they're oppressed or that they are oppressors. We've seen this come into school districts nationally, and I, as a parent of five children, want to make sure that this is not something that is taught to my children. And I think parental involvement and transparency is something I stand very solidly for. The more transparent we are with our curriculum, the more parental involvement that we have in as teachers are selecting books and curriculum, the better. And the more inclusive we are of parents and teachers together, we're going to have a more unified school, and that's what we're shooting for, and that's what I'm going to lead for on the board.
Thank you very much. The next question, Mrs. Peterson will answer first. The population of our district is extremely diverse racially, socio-economic, politically, and in terms of sexual orientation or identification. If you're left there, how will you ensure the different needs of all students are met? Mrs. Peterson?
I just think that it's very important for all of us to recognize that schools should be a safe place, period. No matter the color of your skin, no matter the politics that you adhere to, as my opponent has alluded to or said, politics, our kids aren't Republicans or Democrats, they're kids, they're students. I would just advocate, like I just said in my discussion on books, that we need to make sure that we are a voice for those who don't have a voice, and we need to make sure that everyone feels safe and a sense of belonging in their schools that they go to. And however we can make those provisions at a board level, we should do, so that every child feels a sense of safety and belonging.
Thank you, and Mr. Pendel?
The diversity of our district and our students is a huge strength, just period end of discussion. And the way to do that is to celebrate, and we celebrate it through all sorts of things that our students do well, but also to protect it and nurture it. One of the things I think about, about how, you know, I could relate to students who don't necessarily have the same background and experience that I did, either growing up or currently, is the fact that one of my first teachers was my aunt Eth. She was a teacher in San Francisco Public School District for 35 years, and she started the Chinese-American club at George Washington High School. And the reason why students went to her wasn't because, sorry, she was a, she necessarily was Chinese, they didn't have a Chinese teacher they could go with. But the reason they went to her was because she was a child winner, and she spoke about that experience, and that was the same experience that they had. So relating to our students and finding commonalities in their experience and talking to them is the best way to ensure the needs of our population, and its diversity is met, and celebrate it, because that's something we should do every day. And although I agree, no kid is a Democrat or Republican as a former member of our great speech and debate teams in this district, it's really fun when you learn how to talk and discuss things maturely with people who disagree with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Zee.
In the sequence down here, folks. I'm anti-bullying. There's no place for hate in our schools. Every kid who walks through our doors should be respected and affirmed and acknowledged for who they are. That being said, we also still have to respect parent values and make sure that we're not undermining those in the classroom, and I think that we can do that. I think we can both acknowledge kids and the diversity of their background, and accept them, and love them, and make sure that there's not bullies in schools, and also still respect parents' involvement and their values. And this is the world that we live in, and it's a fine line to go across. But you know what? The reason why I send my five kids to school, or actually my four kids soon to be five kids, is I'm sending them there so that they can learn to read, write, do math, learn history, learn music, learn the arts. That is why I'm sending my kids to school. I think that what we can unify around in our school district is a focus on academics, a focus on learning knowledge and skills that will be required to live in this competitive world that they're growing up into. I think we can respect all parents if we focus on academic values. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, one minute rebuttal for Mrs. Peterson.
I don't mean this as a rebuttal, I just wanted to, just in terms of academic excellence and getting back to core academics, yes, we need to absolutely focus on the characteristics for our kids to be functional and successful adults, but the lessons that we learn cannot deprive anyone gender, ethnicity, But the lessons that we learn cannot deprive anyone gender, ethnicity, racial background from being included in those academics. Two, the fun lessons in elementary school and elective, starting in middle school and growing in high school are what greatly engage students. Allow the space for these kids to have those fun classes like speech and debate, like mock trial, like cooking class. If you focus only on the core academic, you are then making it more difficult for kids to learn and succeed, excel in school. So, thank you. And I want to also say that I've been now to several schools. This high school and the Monmouth High School offers such incredible diverse classes and I'm so excited.
Thank you very much.
I absolutely agree that we have to focus on all the beautiful things that I enjoyed when I was at school. And I enjoyed doing choir. I enjoyed doing sports. I enjoy doing all of those things. We have a finite amount of time with our kids in school. Over the last two years, they have lost so much ground. Naturally, their, their grade average to where kids are at has been decimated. We found that out earlier this month. In California, they just decided to not release their state standard student scores or what happened this year until after the election. And I wonder why? It's because it is not doing good. If you only have six hours with your kid and what your job is to do is to teach them these core values so that they can be successful in life, we have to focus on that first. That's not a conclusion of the other things, but we do have to focus on that first.
Thank you very much. Now keep the microphone. You're going to answer the next question first. Lately, communication has been a hot topic for many parents. Are some things the district gets right on communication? And what can it do to communicate more effectively with the community?
Yeah, this is so hard because you're trying to communicate with everybody and, and, and do that perfectly all the time. And at schools, you're being trusted with a parent's most precious resource, which is their kids. And so they do want that communication. They want to see that. I think it's really hard. You get a lot of emails. Um, I, I do think that there's maybe some way that we can look at how we make the board meetings more accessible. I know for most parents, they want to be involved, but they have no clue what's happening because it's on a Tuesday night from seven to nine and there was sports and there was things going and, uh, being involved. So maybe a way that we can make those, um, those points more digestible and more easily accessible or, or providing additional workshops for parents to come, uh, discuss those things with the board member might be good. I do, I do think that there's also a few other things. Sometimes we hear about things overnight when they happen. And then there's also been other issues, um, that have come up recently, like the teacher Nicholas Mosby, who was arrested for molesting young kids. And we need to hear about that from the district and not from Mercury News. And that's something that as a voice for the folks in the community, that I would want to work with the district to make sure that, hey, I'm hearing this, guys. I'm hearing people saying, why am I not hearing about this? Even if my kid didn't go to that school, I want to hear about that. And I think that's how I can be helpful as well as a board member.
Thank you. Mrs. Peterson?
First of all, understand that people want their voices heard and did not feel that they weighed through the pandemic. As a Board of Education trustee and indeed during my candidacy, I am open to other ideas of transparency that can, and the things that we can do to increase this. We need to prioritize outgoing communications. We need to expand and improve incoming communications. Through the evolution of my time as a parent, I have seen an increase in parent and student surveys and in the opportunity to give feedback through outlets like, outlets like Thank You Dr. Malloy, the Thought Exchange. Board of education meetings are now recorded and I believe that we have a thank you to you for that. And our minutes are publicized in a timely manner. Please, if you have other ideas, let us know because one of us is going to become the next representative for Area One. I want to also, uh, just address what Mr. Vanzey brought up about the, uh, Mosley incident. It is very upsetting. It caused a lot of anger and shock and there were a lot of emotions. Personal matters, personnel matters are not legally, we're not allowed as a district to share that. But this incident was actually a police matter that the district became informed of. Communication could have been much better and I think that's recognized. And in every moving path forward, we will need to look at how we've reacted to things and figure out how we can do better so that our parents feel like they are getting, getting the information that is needed.
Thank you. Mr. Pandell?
Thank you. Yes, eight years ago, when I graduated from school where I did call for the broadcast of school board meetings. And I'm happy that it, uh, happens now. Uh, to that end, I would actually, uh, take away. One set, uh, one of the things of the pandemic that we learned is that the Brown Act can be modified to allow for remote participation of a public in public meetings. Uh, and keep in mind, you know, this is something one of us would have to convince at least two other board members would agree with. But some of our surrounding cities and school districts have had the need to allow a verbal comment at their board meetings. That is something that we should consider seriously doing and something that we want to grow. Uh, cause it does, it does open up the process for people to participate. Uh, I think that is one way to improve. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to do and I would say this is something that I've already seen one of our board members doing right now is monthly hours. You can think of those as a time parent marriage or any community, which is, you should keep in mind, part of the reason our schools are so great is that the 65% plus of people who have kids in our schools help to make them, uh, in some toxic concerns they have. Uh, regardless of the incident, the tragic incident involving the biology teacher. I would say one of the things to do is increase our partnerships and awareness with our district committees, office and law enforcement to help them better aware of these things. There are times when for reasons relating to investigation, they can't be able to share information with us, but board members can as public officials and district partners with those who ended up at the leadership level.
Thank you. Now keep the microphone going to the next question first. When you look at the district's strategic directions plan, what is the most important part to you? Why? Also, have you participated in the strategic direction planning?
Um, I have not participated in the strategic directions planning, although I am part of the Access to Excellence committee. The aspects of the strategic directions, uh, that I actually really have enjoyed the most of, and this is something that will relate back to the prior question relating to uh, communication, is the deep learning part of the strategic direction. And one of the things we really constantly through Instagram stories and posts on, uh, the various media platforms that are for schools and for our district are examples of that deep learning going on every day now that kids are back to school. But it was also happening before too. Uh, I participated in online mock trials and things of that nature that our kids participated in and did exceptionally well at. Um, the deep learning that we're seeing is exactly what our kids need and that covers some of the social emotional needs they have. But it also allows them to spread their wings and really expand those. Um, so that is something that I think is a very important aspect of the strategic direction.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Vanzey, please?
Yeah, I like to, I really appreciate the deep learning and innovation. And I think one of the things that I'm hearing feedback though from folks in the community and parents is what does deep learning mean? And they're asking things, does this mean that this is where we're focusing on academics or what does this mean? Is this also including social emotional being? And it's, and it's kind of all the above. Um, one of the things that I think it's critical to do is to set vision as a board and to do these things. I, I believe that we really need to, um, encourage parents to see all the ways they're focusing on bolstering their children's, um, academics in math, science, reading and writing and how that's working and how we can do that at the same time while elevating students, while encouraging them, while providing, um, inclusivity uh, for them as well. And I, I, I think that that's definitely hands down one of my favorite parts of the overall initiatives.
Thank you. Mrs. Peterson?
Um, what both of these gentlemen said, I would, I would like to focus on the social emotional learning aspect. Um, CDC defines mental health as including our emotional, social and psychological well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and it determines how we handle, relate to others and make healthy choices. This is essential to a healthy school community and a more positive community as a whole. Cannot, we cannot separate out from academics, the effects of social and rational learning. It is an important and integral part of our strategic directions and our strategic initiatives. And I'm very thankful for the leadership of the board and the district that they are including this important initiative.
Thank you very much. Now, our, our next question, um, is Mrs. Peterson again, if you don't keep away the microphone. Um, and, and this will be our final question. I'm very sorry that the, uh, the time has sped by so quickly, but, uh, we only have time for one more question. So Mrs. Peterson, we all know budgets are tight. Where would you allocate funds differently for better student outcomes?
Well, we have a lot of wants. We want elementary school assistant principals, elementary school counselors, elementary school library staff, career tech ed coordinators, intervention support for both certified and classified employees, elementary art and music, one-to-one technology, curriculum refresh, diverse innovative courses, future salaries, employees and benefits retention, lower class sizes and council ratios. All of these things are wants that are being provided, some of them through one-time COVID funding. If we advocate to increase the base grant funding from an average daily allowance, or sorry, average daily attendance to our enrollment numbers that will give us an extra 25% or sorry, $25 million to our budget that can then help fund these things that we want. Overall, the state of California spends 40 to 50% of our state budget on education, but gives less to schools per pupil than other states. The San Diego Valley Unified School District does not get much money from the state formula as other surrounding districts per pupil. We spend $8,862, Dublin $212, and Mount Diablo $9,507. Roughly 80% of the district's money goes through, towards, uh, people classes. Our people and our teachers and our educators are incredibly important and we have to do everything that we can with our budget allowance to be able to recruit and retain incredible educators that our district deserves.
Thank you. Mr. Vanzey?
So, the district has a budget over $400 million. That was actually shocking when I first came in here. Um, there's some issues that are coming up here in the very near future, potential, uh, bond measures, Serbian negotiations, recession problems, which has proven, uh, difficulty for the district in the past. We also have an issue with declining enrollment. In 2018, we had 32,000 kids enrolled in our school. In 2022, we have 29,000 kids enrolled in our school with a projected 2% decline for the foreseeable future. What this represents is tens of millions of dollars less in funding than we currently have. So one of these issues becomes with finite resources, where do you direct them? I would be an advocate for directing these directly into the classrooms, directly into teachers who are teaching our children, who are the boots on the ground for education, directly into programs that are helping bolster our kids in these core, um, core academic areas so that they can live successful lives and that we can get through this. But we do have hard times coming up. You're going to need somebody who has great business acumen that can look at budgets and help work with boards that has that background. I have that background. I look at multimillion dollar budgets every day. I feel very confident doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Pandell?
So, one of the things that you really have to do, and this is something that I've learned from being involved in both this district from when I was a student to now in my role as a volunteer, is your budget has to reflect your values. And that means that you should put the money in the classroom, but that means also ensuring that you retain, recruit the best teachers. And that to the points that, uh, Phil Candace has made, um, I think that really starts with ensuring that every classroom has a teacher. So we have to make our district, it's often called the destination district for parents and families, and that's 100% true. And one of the responsibilities of the board is to govern in a way that keeps us that way. But we also have to make it a destination district for teachers who want to come and be in our classrooms and can afford to live in our communities. And I think that is really where you have to focus the budget. Um, that being said, when you have to make the tough choices, you also have to be creative. And that's one of the things that you learn about when you serve on the bond and look at the long complicated formulas of projected cost of construction versus actual costs, unencumbered expenses and things of that nature. Um, you have to look for ways to creatively expand your, um, uh, budget and, and do things more creatively and expansively. So one of the things I think about, we all dislike Zoom school, understood. But there are opportunities created through distance learning as we've learned at the higher education levels where we could possibly instead of having a teacher no longer teach a class at one high school, allow that teacher to teach classes at multiple high schools in accordance with the contract. So, so I really, really think it. So, we can be creative.
Thank you. Now, uh, thank you, audience, uh, very much for your attention and cooperation this evening. Now each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement and will begin in reverse order from opening statements with, uh, Jesse Vanzey.
All right. Thank you guys again for coming tonight and thank you those who are watching, uh, remotely and, um, I think school boards can have a bigger impact on your day-to-day life than a lot of other elections. And so I do appreciate that you're taking the time to, to learn about those. Um, there's a few other things that I wanted to talk about in this debate that I'm going to take a few minutes to just share about with you as I, as I wrap up. For me, another important thing is that we have safe schools. It's a, it's, it's something that I need as a father. It's something that is, is very important to me. It's not just a, a talking point on, on my, my platform, but something that I need. Um, some of the things that I'd like to make sure that we, we have is our school resource officers. I want to make sure that we keep funding those programs at our school. I've never been in the defund camp. I never will be. Um, I remember as a high school student, having this school resource officer as part of our campus, they were a part of our healthy campus life. Uh, we knew their first name, they knew ours, we mingled with them at lunch and sometimes they even came to our football games. So I want to make sure that we have those resource officers funded because I think it's critical for our student's safety. When you need somebody onsite, you don't need them five minutes away, you need them five seconds away. And as a father, I want to make sure that those things are continued to be funded and expanded if necessary. Um, the other thing I want to do in, in regards to school safety is I want to make sure that we could find some funding to work with outside agencies to evaluate our school sites. Most of our school sites are actually modern and they've been modernized from a, a school safety standpoint. But I want to make sure that our kids are the most protected from internal and external threats while they're on our campus. And that's a big, that's a big important thing that I want to achieve and I want to make everything we possibly can. Um, you know, if, if there ever were something, we could look back and know we did everything that we can. Again, I think, I think you've heard it a lot. I want us to focus on core academics. I want us to get the politics out of the classroom because I think that that is our path back to inclusivity. I think the more ideologically we get in schools, the less inclusive they get because we're going to have political divides. Yet we can all, we can all come together to know that we want our kids to succeed academically. And I just thank you so much for coming again tonight. I look forward to talking to you more in the future. Um, and I'll pass off the mic now.
I'm so glad you brought up school safety. Um, cause as a monster and action leader, I have led this district on initiatives for school safety, which started with taking school drills, their active school drills, shooter drills, down to the emotional capacity of the children involved. I also worked with the district to strengthen our communications, safe storage law. 85% of our school shooting or unintentional shootings happen because a kid gets a hold of a gun that is not secured in their home. So by reminding people of the law of this California to safely secure weapons, we can save lives. I want to remind you that in both Parkland and Uvalde, school resource officers were at these schools. I don't have to remind you what happened in Uvalde. It's fresh in all of our minds. The solutions are identifying threat assessments, working with their line of defense, strengthening school safety plans, identifying soft access points, continuing the security upgrades like interior locking doors and try to get grant funding. and try to get grant funding for all of our educators to have communications in their classrooms which are walking topless. We don't have that right now. Going back to um thanking everybody very much, those who are at home and here, the San Juan Valley Council PTAs, the students, um, and my fellow panelists, this has been an incredible evening. I really appreciate it. I want to remind you that education affects everyone, which is why I take this very position very seriously. Education is personal to people, which is why this position can also be so difficult. I am already actively involved, community member in our schools, and I go out every day in this community, meeting with students, parents, community members, visiting campuses, visiting our wellness centers, doing the work to better prepare myself if I'm able to get the job as Board of Education trustee. And I got to tell you, meeting the incredible people in this district is what is really enjoyable about running a campaign. Everything else is awful. If elected, I will hold virtual office hours, town halls, and publish a quarterly newsletter to help keep you informed. I believe in parent voice, I believe in teacher voice, I believe in student voice, I believe in community voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Jerome Pendel.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first and I thank everyone very much for our organization, the San Juan Valley Council PTAs and other voting voters. Um, when I decided to run for this office, one of the first persons I did, it's a small person who's a leading witness. And I was very honored.
And I was very honored to work with long time.
And that's saying something since I did run.
And that's saying something since I did run against two other board members.
I think what's bad is testimony too. When I decided to run for this office, I went out and sought counsel and advice from educational leaders, both in our district and elsewhere. Uh, that's why I'm happy to have the support of our state superintendent of public instruction, Tony Thurman. Someone I've known for ten years, back when he was a school board member in West County, Costas County. Uh, I'm also happy to have the support of a longtime Tennessee district and former state assembly member, Jim Buchanan. And also another fellow trustee who's campaigned so excited when she ran for two years of talking about the needs of social emotional needs of our students. Uh, I'm also proud to have the support of Andy Lee, my community college president leader, Rebecca Barrett, one of his colleagues. The reality is, when you think about education policies, our board represents a significant slice of it in this county, but also what the district can do well and it does right by its students, its parents, its teachers, and the community as a whole. And that is the tradition that I want to keep on going. Uh, I remember even when I was very young, the types of bar attacks that occurred in our district in the early nineteen nineties. I have no desire to go back to those. Uh, with regards to school safety, since we touched on that in the in this last set of questions, um, one of the things that the community should know is that our school bonds included uh measures into effectuating, be done by outside consultants, architects, engineers who looked at those issues. And that's why you see some access points around this campus. Uh, there is still work to be done for sure, but the good news is that our community has been generous in its support of making sure that we can build our schools that are safe and supportive and nurturing for our students and help ensure that learning occurs in the classroom thanks to our great teachers every day. Uh, there's talk a lot about special interests and money and all of that. Yeah, the campaign to me in order to fundraise and and to succeed. But I'm really proud of the fact that I have endorsement of the San Juan Valley Association, the teachers in our classroom. They taught me, they taught my wife, they taught my brother-in-law, Todd, a special needs student who lives on his own and does great work now on his own. Uh, they've taught hundreds of thousands of students over the many years they've all served our district, and they should be applauded, and I'm proud to work with them and support them. And I'll also gladly sit down with them and talk about the needs of our students along with any and whatever's going to occur. So with that, I'm starting to ask you to vote.
Thank you very much. Now, these are your three candidates for Area One of the San Juan Valley Unified School District. Thank you for your participation in the democratic process this evening. For further information on the candidates, issues, and voting, please refer to vote@four, which is the Legal Women Voters website, um, for voting information. And be sure to vote on November eighth or earlier. Now, I'll return the program to your district's PTAs, Rodney, Brooke.
Thank you all for having tonight, listening, paying attention, for being a member of the conversation regarding our children. This is one of the most important elections that we will face for our children. It's important that all of us take our responsibility and treat it with the respect that it deserves. Thank the equal candidates for giving us tonight and for sharing their ideas. Thank you to our audience members. Thank you most of all to Ms. Lynn for moderating and being with us here tonight. We appreciate everyone's attention and participation with us as we went through these difficulties. And we know that when we go out to vote, we hope you will remember what you did here tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, if you can please take the conversation outside. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerome Pendel, and I'm alma resident and candidate and trustee area one on the San Juan Valley Board of Education. Uh, I'm a longtime volunteer in this district uh as chair for just over three years of the Facilities Oversight Committee and also a member of the community for six years. Uh, the San Juan Valley Unified School District is the community that I'm from. It's where both my wife and I went to El Munchery Middle and High School right here in Area One. Uh, my son will be a student in a few short years at the district schools and is also the place that we call home now. Um, one of the things I'm really proud of is my involvement as a parent volunteer. And that means in addition to my service on the facilities oversight committee, I also just funded and contributed to citizens for quality schools and issues, renew the parcel tax, which voters so generously gave to schools to help ensure we should recruit and retain the best teachers. I'm also a member of the district's Access to Excellence Committee, which is designed to build and expand partnerships with community organizations and businesses to provide more opportunities for our students. I want to collaborate with parents, teachers, students, and all of our community stakeholders to ensure we provide the best possible education and build on the foundations of excellence in our school district. And to that end, I want to listen to you. If I'm elected, I'll hold the office office to do so. I hope you learn more about tonight uh from what I say about my positions and my vision for our district. With that, ask for your vote.
Our not the San Juan Valley Council of PTAs, the Legal Women Voters, and all watching tonight. My name is Michelle Peterson. My husband and I have lived in this community for sixteen years. We are both products of public education and value its place in our society. I am a former firefighter and like many here tonight, had to make a difficult decision to quit my career as it was in the best interest of my family to do so. I know how unfortunate I am to have even been able to make this choice. As a mother of an elementary school student whose son was diagnosed with a learning disability earlier this year, I offer a special lens through which to navigate our children's educational journey. I have volunteered at my son's school for the last six years and served as PTA president there for the last three, navigating a new principle, COVID, and the transition back to in-person learning. During this time, I always made my decisions with the best interest of parents, teachers, and school community in mind. For the past five years, I have served this community in another role as leaders of Moms Demand Action, the nationwide nonprofit group dedicated to ending violence, gun violence in schools. Education affects all of us, and as a parent leader who has demonstrated the ability to work with other parents and staff, I will be a voice that will listen through the distractions and respond with reason and civility. As the parent leader, I have seen firsthand the effects this pandemic has had on our educators. Our nation is facing a crisis in hiring and retaining teachers. And as trustee, I will look to ways to continue to attract the best educators while working to retain the quality staff we have. I am here as a candidate because I believe that every child deserves a sense of belonging and safety to learn and reach their full potential. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Van Zee, and I'm running for school board in Area One. And I want to thank the PTA and the Legal Women Voters for putting this event on here tonight. And I'd like to thank everybody who came here to watch and hear about school board candidates and how that's going to affect them and how they're going to vote if they're elected to the Board of Education. A little bit more about me, I'm a father to five young kids. Um, on my professional life, I'm an executive at a healthcare company where we build and develop cancer treatment centers throughout California. On my uh personal life, I enjoy being uh the president of a nonprofit service organization that works with our local schools to do service projects on campus as well as do fundraising. It's called Montair Dads Club, and it's a group of dads that get together to serve our local school. Um, my wife and I, we moved to San Juan Valley so that we could participate in these amazing schools. And we have a history of really great schools. And yet I acknowledge that the the future is not guaranteed um for our schools, and we must chart a course there. Um, one thing I've noticed is I've started to see nationally and locally, politics are creeping their way into education. And ideology is starting to replace education. The school board seat is a nonpartisan seat, and it's nonpartisan on purpose. And I want to make sure it stays that way. Um, I want to make sure that when I'm up there hearing teachers and students and parents and unions in the community, that they all have an equal voice, which is why I said at the very beginning, no dollars and no endorsements from special interest groups, no dollars and no endorsements from politicians or politically affiliated parties. It's not because I'm against those, but it's because I want you to know when I make a decision that I've made it because I feel like it is the best way for you. You shouldn't have to second guess that. Um, and I'm the only candidate on this stage tonight who is uh taking that commitment and not taking dollars or endorsements because I don't believe we have Republican kids or Democrat kids or independent kids. I believe we simply have kids who deserve the best education they can get. Thank you.